We're missing Claire. Hmm?
Claire.
Claire Miller.
Yeah. Oh, there she is.
Oh, there she is. Hi, Claire. Randy, how you doing?
Can you hear me?
There we go, yep, I can hear you now. Claire?
Yes, I can hear you.
Very good. Okay, here we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, today is August 20th. It's 6:30. And, uh, we're having, uh, this meeting for the Towne Manliness zoning board of appeals. Uh, I'll have the meeting come to order and our first thing will, will stand for pledge allegiance. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic it stands. One nation, under God, individual, and liberal. Okay, thank you. Uh, first item is the, um, minutes. Uh, has everybody had a chance to re- oh, no, let me introduce everybody. Um, like I said, my name's Camby Kelly, I'm the chairman. Then we have Jim Campbell. Jim, there's Jim, hi Jim. Uh, Jim is on the, uh, is one of the board members. And then Tim Kelly. Where's Tim, there's Tim. Another board member. Claire Miller. Hi, Claire, board member. And Julie Salomo. There, Julie, thank you. Uh, the other town officials. Randy Catalotti is a building inspector, codes enforcement person. Debbie Wensel. Debbie, right there, she's our secretary. Uh, Jamie Sutcliffe is our attorney. Allison Weber is our town clerk. Hi. Um, this evening we have two, 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 uh, two items to consider. But first, um, did anybody have a, um, a second, uh, some time to read the minutes of the last meeting? And do I have a motion? To accept those minutes as read?
I.
There's two sets of minutes.
Yeah.
Are they?
Yep, there's two sets of minutes, one for July 16th and one for July 30th.
I've got just July 30th here.
There was the special meeting and then the prior meeting.
July 30th was the special meeting. And then the 16th was the regular meeting.
This was, uh, July 30th was just the regular meeting.
No, July 30th was the special meeting.
Yep.
On the 30th. If I look at it here for a second. Yes, this was the special meeting. Yes.
But we need to approve the July 16th also.
I make a motion to approve those July 16th minutes.
I, I wasn't at the July 16th meeting and I marked that I was present, so, or it's marked that I was there.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Alrighty.
Uh, we need a second for that motion?
A second.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, the minutes of, um, July 30th, the special meeting, right?
Uh huh, yep.
That, uh, has been passed.
No, I thought it was the 16th.
Now we have July 16th.
And what was your motion for?
July 16th, for the, the regular minute.
Okay.
Alright, so that's the one that's been approved. Now we do July 30th. Right?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes for July 30th. Do we have a motion to, uh, accept those as written?
I saw move.
Thank you, Jim, now we have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Judy, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, those minutes also approved. That's written. Thank you, thank you. Get those, go on, okay. Um, Debbie, the, um, the, um, where are we here? The public notices have been published?
Yes, they have.
Yes, they have, okay. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of those, uh, those, uh, um, notices?
I make a motion to waive the reading of the notices.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we can waive the reading of the legal notices. Um, tonight we have, um, two items on the agenda. Both of them are swimming pools. And, uh, one is existing, one is, uh, a new one. But, uh, we have to consider each one and we're going to, uh, grant or deny a variance in each case. Uh, the first one, uh, will be, uh, the Marshals. Uh, do we have a motion to open a public hearing on that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tim, a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jim, alright. Uh, all in favor of opening the, uh, the, uh, all in favor of the motion to open the hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Opposed? Okay. The public, um, um, uh, hearing is now open for Mr. and Mrs. Marshall and their request for variance. Are they here this evening?
Yeah.
Hello? The Marshals?
Can you? We, we are here. Can you hear us?
I can hardly hear them. Anybody hear them? Hello?
We are, we are here.
Okay, okay, thank you. Hi, okay, we can't see you but we can hear you, is that the deal? I guess so.
Yes.
Okay. First of all.
I'll try to get the internet to work.
Uh, that's, uh, what, um, uh, what, why did you ask, ask for the variance? What do you need to do? Um, for this, um, yeah, what are you, uh, what are you doing that you need a variance for? From this, um, from the ZBA?
We are putting in a pool, as, uh, Allison nicely put up that for us. Um, and we just can't make the 40 feet, uh, for the, the, um, man, the Towne Manliness rules there.
Okay.
Uh, to keep it 20 feet from the house and to keep it, uh, 40 feet from the back there. Um, it won't fit the pool. Um, in fact, we tried a rectangular pool too and it was the same issue. We probably could get as small as, uh, five to eight feet. But with the fencing and everything, we, we needed a little extra, uh, space.
Okay, alright, very good. Um, I need to ask you the five criteria questions. Um, I think you've already reviewed these, but I need to ask them for the record, okay?
Okay.
Let's see, um. Let me get the, okay, um, well, the benefit to the applicant can be achieved by some other means? Is there some other way you could do this where, where you wouldn't need the variance?
Uh, no, I think with the fencing and to keep it from 20 feet from our house, we couldn't fit in the property line there.
Okay, um, you think this variance will cause a undesirable change in character of the neighborhood?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay. Uh, question three, you think this, uh, request is substantial?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Uh, question four, um, you think this will have any adverse physical or environmental, uh, effects on the neighborhood?
No, I do not.
Okay. And was this branch, um, the request, was, was it self-created?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Alright. Um, simple enough, no right or wrong answers, you know? Um. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant?
Did any of your neighbors have any complaints about this being put in?
Uh, no, I actually was able to speak to all of them. Um, the one, I guess to the, if you look at our house to the right of us, the Hansons, they actually asked to join the meeting tonight. I said, "You're more than welcome," and they said, "Just to help us out." Um, and then I spoke with the, the members behind, or the neighbors behind us as well. Um, as you see from the paper, everybody was aware of the meeting tonight. Um, and nobody seemed to have any questions for me at that time when I, I went from house to house.
Okay, very good. Uh, any other questions?
Um, yes, Claire Miller, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, Claire, go ahead.
Okay. Um, are you going to take down any of those large trees that are in the back?
So, the, the large pine tree in the back, we, actually, my husband and I were trying to figure out how we were going to put the fence around it. So, um, it is actually the neighbors, but then it comes on into our yard. Um, so we, we, we were going to talk with Matt about. We were going to talk to Matt about, um, whether or not we should butt up our fence to his or just kind of angle it so that it goes around the tree and then comes around the, so we haven't actually got it. But it's, it's not the pool that would be the issue, it's, it's how to put the fencing around that tree.
Okay.
Yeah. Allison, would you mind pulling up the, um, the overhead view of the property? Thank you.
Alright. Everybody familiar with this, uh, this yet? And where the house is and so on?
So, all four of the rear neighbors have in-ground pools.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that's pretty bad, yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing is that this lot is, uh, I think 160 feet deep or we're kind of used to a 200-foot deep lot. Which, uh, you know, uh, would help. But, um, any other questions from the, uh, from the board members?
I was going to ask about the trees also there.
Yeah, that was, that was one of my questions as well.
Yeah, um, okay, um, do we have any questions from the public? Yeah, Allison. Ms. Weber. Hello, Allison?
One second, uh, let me stop the share. Uh, no, we have nothing on Facebook, uh, and we have, uh, nothing in the Q and A. Uh, we did have a comment though that said, uh, from, uh, Mr. Hanson. He said, "We have no concerns with the plan, we are the neighbors to the east."
Okay. Alright, very good. Um.
We leave in the morning.
Uh, no other questions from the board, no member, no questions from the public? I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tim. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Uh, the board members, um, for Mr. and Mrs. Marshall, the board members will now discuss this. And you're welcome to listen, of course. Uh, but we're going to discuss this among ourselves. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, board members, I'm going to start with the, the, the five, the same five, uh, questions. Let me get that up here. Okay, um, you think the applicant could, uh, could have done this, uh, some other way? Anybody?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't see a rea, or a way they could.
Yep, um, um, you think it's going to change the, uh, character of the neighborhood?
No, there's already four pools behind it, so.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree with Jim.
So, there'd be no change there. Uh, you think this is substantial variance?
No.
No.
Not for the neighborhood, no.
No.
No. Uh, you think this will have an impact on the physical or environmental, uh, conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
No.
No, I don't either, no. Um, whether it's self-created?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanted a pool, so. Alright, um, any, any other discussions on that? No other discussions, okay. So, uh, after, uh, considering the, the five factors, um, you believe the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood? Right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, okay. Uh, as opposed it does not outweigh. So, in this case here, we're in favor, uh, we're, um, have the variance for the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, the, um, the ZBA further finds that a variance of 15 feet from the rear, uh, yard setback, uh, is the minimum variance that could be granted, uh, to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the, uh, health, safety, and welfare of the community. All agreed?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, and we further, um, uh, I don't think there should be any, uh, I don't see any conditions that we need to put on this. Does anybody have a comment on the conditions? No?
What, is there a construction date by the, when it's going to be done by?
Oh.
Oh, so they said they could start digging in October, but with all of, uh, the people that they were trying to meet, it's a, the, there are a lot of people that want pools right now. So, um, Kyle and I probably decided that it probably won't go in until the spring, but October is supposed to be the start date. Right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I have to agree with that. Uh, sw, a swimming pool seems to be the big item this summer with all the kids home and everything else. So, um, I don't want to, at this point, don't want to put a condition on that. But the point is to the Marshals, the point that Jim is trying to make is that once it starts, we'd like the thing finished as a, as opposed to being dragged out for a year or so. Okay? But I'm not going to put that in as a condition, that's just a, an understanding between you and us.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Yes, we will do our best.
Thank you. Uh, any other conditions we need to consider? Okay, no conditions, um. Um, would, um, somebody like to, um, um, let's see. Well, and, uh, let's see. We closed the public, okay. We reviewed the questions and now, would somebody like to make a motion? Oh, wait a minute, we got to, uh, the, there's no significant impact on the environment, therefore a proposed type-two action on C Core, where no further review is, uh, required. Based on all this information, uh, and our discussions, would somebody like to make a motion to grant or deny this area of variance?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the zoning board grant an area of variance to Kyle and Karen Marshall for the real property located at 8236 Penn Stockway, Manliness. This variance be granted for the specific purpose of permitting the construction of an in-ground swimming pool, modifying the, the rear line, rear yard setback to 25 feet in lieu of the required 40 feet.
We'll have a second on that motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, uh, all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to this? Alright, so the board members, uh, have granted, um, uh, approval of this variance, uh, for you to install your pool. And, um, how does it work now, Debbie? I forget exactly how, does any?
I'll give the approval notice to Lisa and she will mail out their permit.
Okay, okay.
Uh huh.
Mr. and Mrs. Weber? Okay?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so you'll get that in the mail, uh, shortly.
Alright, thank you very much for your time.
Have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye. Alright, the second item on the agenda. I don't seem to have, okay, the second item on the agenda is from the Kramers. Um, is Mr. Kramer here?
Sir.
You can, uh, okay, there's his, um, okay, we, we have a shot of his, uh, flat plan here. Um, can you, uh, give us an idea, rundown of why you need a variance?
Uh, yeah, because we're about 10 foot from our prop, or actually, 13, about 13 foot from the water line to our property line. And it's, ass, actually has to be 15 foot. And the pool company actually was going to go over a little bit further, but they had ran into a, a boulder in the ground and, and had no choice but to, and, and the only part that's not 15 foot, I have an oasis-shaped pool. And the only part that's not 15 foot is a very small portion of the pool that jots out a little bit. And it's about, I would say, give or take 12 feet from my property line.
Okay. Uh, I need a motion to, uh, we haven't done this yet. We, we need a motion to open this to, uh, for a public hearing on this issue.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tim, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, so, uh, that, um, Mr. Kendall's, uh, presentation will be part of the record. And, we get the public, okay. I don't know why I seem to be so far behind here, but, I'm sorry, I'll catch up. Where are we here, motion to hear? Okay, and Miss he presented, um, alright, so, um, Mr. Kramer, I need to ask you these five questions, okay?
Okay, sir.
Thank you. First question, um, is, uh, can you, is, I mean, it's kind of, you know, hard to ask, but you already got the pool in the ground, but is there some other way we can do this without asking for a variance?
No, there wasn't.
I mean, you could dig up the pool and move the thing.
True, but we prefer not to.
Okay. Um, you think that variance is going to cause a, a change to the character of the neighborhood?
No, I do not.
Okay. Uh, do you think this request is substantial?
Yes. Or no, I'm sorry.
Alright, no, no right or wrong answer, you're okay. Um, you think this will have any physical or environmental effects on your, uh, neighborhood or surrounding areas?
No, I do not.
Okay. And was this, uh, uh, request, uh, the need for the variance, self-created?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Um, I'm going to open the, uh, open it up to the board. If they've got any questions for you on this, uh, variance? Anybody from the board have a question?
Allison, this might be a good time to pull up the overhead. Do you remember where it is in the packet? Okay.
Alright, so, the, uh, the address is this, uh, red dot here, basically the middle of the screen, is that right?
Looks right to me.
And did you have a pool in there before or something?
No, I had nothing until, until they just installed this, uh, two weeks ago, I believe, week and a half ago.
Oh, okay. I see some, kind of a round spot in your backyard there. It looked like maybe a pool, but, um, anyways, anybody on the board have questions? For, uh, Mr. Kramer?
Are your neighbors okay with everything with this?
As far as I know, all my neighbors were. I, I mean, obviously, I had one neighbor that was calling on the distance. But I had spoke with my neighbor directly across the street, as well as my neighbor to the, uh, east of me. And neither one of them had a problem. They were actually willing to come on the Zoom meeting as well. And I told them there was no need, need to.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, um, um, I've been over there, um, I, I, I personally think it was a, um, what would you call it? Uh, I don't think it was done on purpose, uh, in a malice way, but, um.
Absolutely not.
Do we have, um, any more questions from the board? No, okay. Do we have any questions or statements from, from the, from, uh, his neighbors? That would be Allison. Nothing? No comments, none of that? Okay, alright, very good. Um, if that's the case, with no, uh, no other questions, uh, I need a motion to close a public hearing on this matter?
I'll make that motion.
Make them, second?
Thank you, Tim, Jim, all in favor of closing? Say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No, okay, so the motion, uh, to close the public hearing is, uh, passed. And now we'll have our discussion among the board members. Um, and I'm going to start with the same five questions. Uh, you think there's some other way this man could, uh, could do this? Any comment?
With, with the boulder in the backyard, from what they explained, they would have had to move it like they did, so.
Yeah, once you get the equipment there, it's pretty expensive to, um, sit around and wait for an answer for a couple of weeks. So I guess I would think they've done probably the best they could. Um, so.
I agree with that.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, you think this is going to make a, a change to the character of the neighborhood?
No.
No? No, I don't either. Um.
You have to tell the pool is there with the fence and, uh, and the house. I mean, unless you went, went back there to actually look at it, you wouldn't even know it was there, so.
Right, right. The other thing is that, that, if fence, if, um, I, I talked to this, uh, this, the lady at the house. And she said that they've still got another two feet. The, the fence is on their property by two, two and a half feet. So, they could push that fence out some. I mean, it's still, they're still over the 15, but, um, um, I don't think it's substantial. But, uh, where am I here? You think this, uh, request is substantial?
No.
No, I don't think so, I think it's reasonable. Would the variance, uh, cause, uh, impact in, in physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No. Uh, you think it was self-created?
Yes.
Maybe.
Partly, yeah.
Okay. So then it comes to, um, our determination, um, the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes.
We agree with that, yeah? Uh, although the other one, it does not outweigh the, uh, the detriment to the neighborhood. Although the other one, it does not outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. So we want to say that the applicant does, the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then we further find a variance of five foot for side yard setback ranging from 15 feet down to 10 feet. Where it should be granted in order to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood, the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We all agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You think there should be any conditions?
Pool's already in, so.
Pool's already in, yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody, somebody want to say something? No?
I was just agreeing with that, it's already in there, it's not much you can do now.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. May want to put in some shade trees or something along that fence line, but who knows? So does somebody, let's see. Somebody want to make a motion? Let's see, am I in the right place here? No. Did we? Did we close the public hearing?
Yes.
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 Thank you, thank you.
Speaker.
Okay, we've asked the five questions, thank you. Okay, here we are. I am lost tonight. Tomorrow morning, for the record, we're leaving and we're going to Boston to see the grandkids.
Nice.
Have a good trip.
All right, thanks.
Please apologize, you know, accept my apology for being so messed up here tonight. Can't wait to get out of here. We're disappointed, I see there's no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose a type two action on C Core and no further review is required. Based on our discussions, would somebody like to make a motion to grant or deny the area variance for this applicant? Somebody make a, make a motion to grant or deny? No?
Yeah, I will.
It's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the zoning board grant an area variance to Justin Kramer of 115 Kendall Drive, West East Syracuse, New York. This variance to be granted for the specific purpose of permitting the construction of an in-ground swimming pool, modifying the side, side yard setback to five feet in lieu of the requested, required 15 feet.
He needs, he's going from 15 down to 10 feet.
I was going to five, right?
Randy?
What's that?
We're a little bit confused here. We're going from 15 feet down to 10 feet. So he needs a five-foot variance.
The side yard setback is 15.
Yes.
He's around, he's around 10, 12, depending on where that survey stake is. But to be safe, we're granting five feet relief from the 15-foot setback.
Five foot release, a five-foot variance, yes.
All right, we're making a, modifying the side yard setback to 10 feet in lieu of the required 15 feet.
Yes. Yep, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a second on it.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tim. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so, Mr. Kramer, your variance has been granted and Debbie will, will be sending, sending you this paperwork.
Very good, thank you.
We're just going to continue with the, anyways, we're good, we're good. By the way, there isn't any, there's no changes, yeah, there's no conditions to be marked. Okay. Let's see, there's something else I wanted to bring up. That's for a grant, we did that. Wait a minute, where is, oh, here it is. We're also, on another subject, we're going to eliminate the, the applicants now have to go out and request this information or approval from their neighbors. And in some cases, that gets pretty awkward. And so if we just let Debbie just send out the notice to the neighbors about the variances and eliminate the need for the applicant to do so. Anybody have any qualms with that, any? We okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Understand the difference? So the application right now indicates that the applicants are supposed to go door-to-door. And Debbie is also sending out the applications. So what we're going to do is drop the requirement of the applicant to go door-to-door.
So, how are they going to go about responding? By returning a postcard or by email or what are they going to do?
They can call, my email is in there. They can come into the office, it's all available in the letter I send.
Okay.
Also, however, that would not prevent, and there may be circumstances where it certainly would behoove the applicant to talk to their neighbors in advance. And I think that's something that Debbie will tell them. But as far as the actual requirements, we would propose changing that requirement. So if you want to entertain a motion to that effect, then it would become a policy of this board.
Oh, okay. So would somebody like to make a motion to accept that?
Is there something we can amend ourselves or does it have to go be approved by the town board or?
Well, I think we send it to the, we make a motion, we approve it, then we send it to the town board and they.
So it, as a policy of the board, it's fine for this board to adopt it. I did talk to Tim about that and that we were in agreement that it could be adopted at this board level. And it's not, because of the requirements of the town code and the code of the town of New York are met.
Yeah, okay.
So it would be required, but it would be strongly advised, is what you're saying, right, Jamie?
As far as talking to neighbors, yes, you know.
Okay.
And I think that's common sense, but certainly Deb can say that. But the thing that we're actually changing is that Debbie is going to send out all of the notices.
Yeah, they're not required to. The applicant is not required to go neighbor, door-to-door. He's welcome to, but not required to. Right?
Is Debbie responsible to find out who the neighbors are or is the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't want them to tell you who their neighbors are?
No, I look it up on Google and yes.
All right.
So if I could, I can help frame this motion. It would be a motion to change the policy of the zoning board with respect to notification of neighbors so that official notices are mailed by the town, by the zoning board clerk in advance of the meeting. The applicant does not have to mail any notices. And further, the applicant would be encouraged to, but is not required to personally speak to neighbors before the proceeding.
Okay. All right, somebody want to? Somebody want to make a motion to that, accept that?
I have a question. So are they required now to absolutely consult with their neighbors? That's what I'm confused about. And we're changing it that they aren't? Like.
It has, seems to have been a policy of this board that they, that, and we couldn't find the written policy to that effect, but it seems to have been the policy that they would have to contact their neighbors and look for signatures. Also, they were required to send notices. And we would like to have it that it's actually better if our own town staff sends the notice because they know exactly who to send it to and also it'll get there. You know, well, we know that the right people have been notified.
Well, everybody, everybody will be notified in the area with Debbie doing it.
I believe we have a limit of 500.
I usually send to any properties that connect to the property or is across the street. So if anything even touches on the applicant's property, I send it to them.
Yeah. In past cases, it's been questioned whether all the neighbors were notified. In this case now, with Debbie sending them out, they all been notified. And we won't have to rely on just the applicant doing it. And I mean, like you're saying, it's best that they do go around to the neighborhood and do explain what's going on, but it's not required. Okay?
In these times where people don't much want to answer their door.
Yeah, yeah, with this virus, yeah. So we're still, that's a motion? Somebody want to? Do we need to say? Do we need a second on that or we need a first? What do we need, what are we?
We need a first.
We need a first, I'll make that motion.
Jamie kind of outlined the motion, so.
Yeah, I was going to say I'll make the motion as Jamie outlined to have Debbie send out the notice in lieu of the resident having to do so themselves.
Okay, now a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of this change?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, nobody opposes, so this motion will also carry. Okay? Is there any other, any other business before this meeting? Anything else that anybody wants to bring up or discuss or whatever? Okay? All right, well, a motion to adjourn, then, please. Somebody make a motion to adjourn so I can go to Boston?
Now, I'll move that we adjourn, so Grant can go to Boston.
A second?
I second it as my dog is going crazy to go out right now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Happy birthday, you have a good trip.
Thank you.